Uh, just so you know. Just so you know, we um typically share Google Doc. And um, we can all kinda add to it as we go.
It's the six twenty seven me, are you gonna send out? I had the six twenty seven mean.
I said on agenda this morning.
Oh, and that's that had the uh, and that was a link from the Google Doc?
It was on Google Doc now.
Okay.
So.
I read it.
I've got a new laptop, so I don't have to access more to Google Doc. Ask Lydia, send me the link.
Oh, okay.
Here, I can, I can give me just a minute, I can pull everything out, get this.
Alright.
Get this what we need to be, but. So. I only use this computer here.
It looks like nineteen ten.
It is, it is, it really is.
When you were saying Ascension, that's what I, yeah, is on there ascend, isn't that the climbing gym? Ascend?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I, when you said that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's for sure.
But you were talking about the. Ethereal Ascension. Ascension into heaven.
Yes.
It's a lovely climbing gym, that's for sure.
No, it is buried, so I'm buried.
Buried, right?
Cause the first one is mains gate, next one is buried.
Challenge by. Alright, so um, so you guys know, there is a um, a Crafton Drive. Google Drive. And in the Crafton Drive, there is everything that you need to. See the history and the ongoing notes of what we do.
Well, I, I think it's important, I, I think it's important because there's gonna come a time. There's gonna come a time where you're gonna be like, well, they never said that.
I will never say that.
Well, not you.
That's all great to me, man. Lucky I know how to turn my computer on.
Right? Are you creating the folder right now? I can create the folder.
Oh, you're in the drive.
Yeah, I found the drive, I found, I knew I'd been connected with it at one point, but I didn't remember.
And then you're gonna move those two Word docs into it, right?
I'll just copy and paste them so that.
So the key point for you is to have continuity.
Yeah.
Right?
Yep.
Um, so because, you know, um, we're going away, he's going away. You're gonna be here, uh, or maybe not, but at least there's continuity of all the stuff over the years.
Yeah.
Alright, that's really important. As we talk to some of the things I wanna heckle you guys about. It is, it's very short. What's wrong with that?
Don't I usually agree with you though?
Yes.
Alright.
That's from saying like it's.
Not good with this whole technology stuff sometimes.
Yeah.
On my drive, share with me, I see chunks of things that have been shared.
Um, go down, keep going down, you'll see a folder somewhere. If you click in people. Search for Lydia. I know she looks like, maybe you done, didn't have the whole thing, I'll share with you right now, I got it in there, I don't know, maybe you've never had it, the whole drive shared with you.
This is important housekeeping. I, I know, I know.
Oh, Ben, she wasn't ever shared with you.
I'm like, I thought I had, uh.
Uh, Beaver Della?
Uh, just Vincent Redella.
What you guys started?
Yeah, it's on there.
There's no.
There's no one on there, but it is recorded. I'm actually gonna put you on there too though.
I think mine was already on there. I'm pretty sure mine's on. Challenge to figure out how to get to it.
You're not on there.
See that?
Yep.
Do you have a Gmail address?
Mine was.
No.
Uh, yeah, I probably do.
I see a seven twenty five.
Give me one second.
Are you creating anyone?
I created seven twenty five. And I have an untitled document, I can create the actual document itself.
I will escape. So I have a separate document that's like ten years old, that's like Brad is fucking crazy, Phil is out of his mind. Alana, what planet does she come from? I have all those things. I don't, I don't share this document, but you're, you're welcome to have it if you really want, you know, ask for it.
Did I remind you, this is being recorded?
Oh, oh, no, no, nothing I said, nothing I said is, is.
Just wanna make sure.
Yeah, nothing I said is, 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 is nothing that those individuals haven't heard before. My mom, love what they do.
There it is.
There we go.
You found your Gmail?
Yeah.
You found your, okay, hold on, let me get back there now.
Alright, what is it? Greiner, G R E I N E R.
Sorry, second. So do we?
G R E I.
You sent.
M A T T.
Yeah.
Thirty-two. At gmail dot com.
It's not much.
You wanna paste that into the newly formed document?
It is already on there.
It's already on the newly formed document. You must be in the, a different one, I uh.
I'm in the seven twenty five planning commission document.
Oh, there you go, yeah.
Oh, these are the minutes from last week, my fault.
You have some doubts right there?
Yes.
Good.
Alright, so it's for all the order. Roll call? We need to do that or?
I mean, we can.
Okay.
Whenever we're cool here, we can go with that.
There's any comments? No one's on there?
No one's here, no one's on, no one's on, no one's here.
So the call order should be a timestamp, which is six, four, three.
So you get to see yourself, stop.
Alright. So zoning project updates.
So can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Roll call, so I see um. I see Matt, Ben's, Don Arice, who's Don Arice?
Donnie.
Donnie.
The gentleman right here.
He just met.
Don, I'm just kidding you shit. Uh, so, um, is this it? Cause I heard there was, Donnie, I heard, heard there was someone else joining.
Nope. This is it.
So, one, two, three, four.
Lydia.
Oh, Lydia is not.
She's, she's just not present today, but she is still a member.
That, that's kinda where I was gonna say lines, so there's just.
Yeah, she's just absent today. Yep, she emailed earlier today, or.
Last week, I think.
I just wanna make sure that.
Yep.
Okay, keep going, citizens comments, nobody's here, citizens, sign in.
Yep.
Alright, so next up zoning project update.
Yep, so we did get a website, they did create a website, um, that is, that I'll um, be sharing with everybody over the next couple of days. Um, I had to go back on some edits, um, just some basic la- language, they were using incredibly academic language. Um, and so it was just not understandable um, to most people, so we had that edited. Um, and it should go out, um, via um, Savvy and it'll be posted on a. They, on the Facebook, but it's basically just a place where citizens can go and comment on stuff and you can read about. Um, certain issues and if there's new issues that come up, that, that we posted there and if you guys want anything posted there or think something should be more clear. Um, let us know and we'll do what we can to update it, um, but that'll go out for citizen comment, um, very shortly. Um, I just got word today, I, I sent them information to update before I left for vacation. And just found out today that it's been updated, so um, so that's the next step with public outreach. We did get um, what's called a calibration table, um, which is essentially all the details for every district. Um, the new, all the new districts or changes and it uh, lays out. What the existing regulations are and then shows what their proposed changes are. Um, and I sent that back, basically I took a stab at editing it first just to make sure that there's no typos and stupid stuff. Um, and there were a few little things. For the calibration table and I should, I have to double check with uh, our um. Um, Zone, Zone Co, the consultants to make sure that nothing else needs to be changed. Um, and then we'll share that as well, that will go to the steering committee next, um, and that is made up of, you're on it, Matt, and.
I was.
You what? Oh, I didn't know you had dropped off, okay, so um.
Why are you dropping off?
I did a long time ago.
Why?
Cause I kept missing meetings and this, that and the other thing.
I do, you.
But you're valuable, you're a valuable authority in the community, can you just, just try and make an attempt to, to, to be there?
Well, we added new members, so I don't, now that you've said that, I think we, we've added a few, I think now. Uh, Greg is on it and uh.
Who?
Greg Wozniak is on it.
Okay.
Jay, his, his friend James Manchin is on it and a few others, so it's pretty full, there's quite a few people on it, so Kalen is on it.
But no one from the steering committee, or no one from the uh.
Planning Commission.
Plan Commission is on it.
No, not currently.
That's a miss.
Yeah, or unless Lydia is, I'm not sure.
I don't think she was, I think it was, I think it was Kirsten and Matt.
Right.
Two from us, from Plan.
That's just.
I mean, we could talk about something from another.
Line of separation, right?
Yeah, we can talk about putting somebody else on, I mean, we're sharing all the information, um, and they've been meeting, so.
Well, I know, sharing information requires somebody to actually consume the information versus being present for the information, so I just, I, I worry about that. But, okay.
Yep, well, that's it, that's where we're at, so as soon as we get that calibration tables up and the steering committee will review it and then though. I, I think it'll probably either get wound into the public um, uh, website. Or um, I'm not sure how Zone Co wants to present that, it's really dense information, so I doubt we're just gonna put it out in general public because. It's bore, you know, like, how big of a, a setback is required?
Should be parsed into a survey or a series of bullet points.
Right, so I'm not sure how they're, they're planning to do that outreach, but that's the next step.
And that, they're, they're contractually obliged to.
Oh yeah, they produce that website for free as a part of it, so that's, this is a big part of their job is doing, well, as part of their contract. Right, no additional cost to them.
Right, as part of the contract.
Right.
And I would not be adverse to rejoining if there were some reason why that could happen. I just need someone to make it more idiot proof for me, um, you know me, I'm not an email guy, you're the guy that's calling me and saying, where are you?
Yeah, I know, I know.
I can text you if you wanna.
I've just thought, I mean, I am just, I am not on my, no offense to anybody, I am not on email, I don't thought on a computer, it's not what I do.
Let's, let's table your accessibility for a second. Um, I think that um.
Usually always accessible.
The, of the four of us who are present, there are a few that have um, the tribal knowledge. Of what is Crafton and what is Crafton's economic development over the past X number of years with. Respect to your twenty-nine.
Well, I've been here for fifty-two, fifty-three years.
I'm trying, I'm trying.
Thanks for making me feel young, Eric, I appreciate it.
What I'm saying is, you know, what I'm saying is, when somebody says, what about the Dollar General down, what about the, you know, like, boom, he knows. That's right, and that is valuable in terms of how do you contextualize the things that are gonna get down to the community. And um, I wanna come back to, so let's table and.
That's fine, I'm just saying, I would be.
But I, I wanna, I wanna table and revisit it, I wanna, I wanna understand what we can do there, but um, the thing that you said, you, you, you said something is. Randomly, like. Cherokee knowledge, I have no idea what calibration table means. Nor do I care.
Okay.
Um, so how do we make sure? That if a calibration table is presented to the public? That, that as a planning commission, like, look, we're not the consultancy, we're not doing the work of the consultancy. But what we're trying to do is elevate the work that the consultancy is doing. So that from a planning perspective, we have tangible impactful things that happen from. I lived through the park plan last year and I get angry every day in the fact that zero percent of it is actually implemented, zero percent.
We've applied for multiple grants.
Don't care about grants.
Well, that's how it goes, that's the process.
Yep, yep.
You gotta get money.
Yep, yep, don't care about grants, care about what can be done locally. Um, um, that's, that's what I'm, what I'm trying to get to here is what can we be doing? So that this isn't, this isn't just one more thing that we're like, oh, we're pushing this off to mana from heaven from the state or we're, you know. Is that, that, right now, that's what Park Plan is, just something we're, we use to potentially push off to. Give grants versus things that we have implementability, or you saw my white paper.
Mm-hmm.
Right, um, and I think it's an epic failure in the past X amount of months for us to not have done any of those things. That we could easily have done without any cash or budget or minimal cash or budget, so.
What white paper? I haven't seen a white paper.
I'll find a QR code for you.
Okay, um, as far as the calibration table is concerned, I mean, it's basically just the districts and every piece of detail laid out. Um, uh, as to the parameters for each district.
Why is Millie on Elm Street care? Uh, I don't know Millie, I don't know if we have an Elm Street.
Well, you asked, you asked where the calibration table is, so I'm trying to.
No, no, yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying.
Right, well.
What can we do to help Millie on Elm Street care?
Well, that'll be part of the work that Zone Co does and we'll work together with them, the steering committee will work together with them as we get closer once the. Once it's been decided that generally speaking that the calibration table is what the steering committee and the planning commission want. And then you go to public outreach and uh, and then you talk about how do you communicate that, we're not at the step yet on how to communicate it, but we can get there. But we don't wanna, we don't wanna do that yet, cause we don't know what is there.
Right, yeah, it makes perfect sense.
And then you wanna really push, then you really wanna talk about and communicate the places where it'll change. That way, cause that's what Millie cares about, where is it different from what it is now, so when we get there, well, we, we can communicate where the proposed changes are. And how that will affect you and why they're, and why they're there, so there'll be a description of why the change is being proposed. Um, and then how that'll affect, so that'll be probably where we go from there.
School, um, so I know that the contract, uh, with the consultant has some. Stakeholder engagement sessions, that sort of stuff, is the calibration tables presentation to the public are of that.
I don't know how they plan on, I don't know how they plan on doing that.
And they, and they burn, you know, they burn through all their.
No, we have plenty of time left, we, we're, we're in contact with them until March of next year and we have plenty of public engagement sessions left.
I, I, that's what I was, okay.
Yes.
So, there were like two built into the contract.
Hmm, there were more than that.
Okay, okay. Um, well, that's good to hear.
Yeah.
It's good to know on, on the record, so, um, so. Am I the only one that knew that the, 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 the calibration table vernacular is new to?
Well, no, I, I just picked up on what he was saying as far as the calibration table goes, it's basically. It, it, it's a term that doesn't need to, it's basically, how is the current code going to? Change to the new code, I don't know why they call it a calibration table, but.
They're calibrating the details and, and just a way.
But in education, we call it a crosswalk, so.
Right, right. In simple terms, it's, okay, this is what, um, section three forty dash one, s- subs, paragraph A. Versus, okay, what they're gonna say.
Three point five millimeters equals one inch, right, and this is what our new definition of an.
Right, or, okay, originally we, you know, setbacks for twenty feet, we're proposing uh, fifteen feet or, you know. So.
So with, with the, with respect to the zoning project update.
Is it a silly name, yes?
Well, it's, it's vernacular, this is what, it's what consultants do, it's what keeps them employed because they have their own range. So, um, with respect to the zoning project update, is there any action items that this body wants to do? Um, in the past, we've done webinars and we've done open houses, we've done things with the park plan, we've done things with the. Uh, with the streets, we, we, we've done, we've done lots of things over the past four or five years, three or four years now. Um, that have been around public and get, that were separate from the work that would be done from the consultant, that were separate from. Do, is there anything, do we wanna just completely rely on the consultant, which is a fine option? Do we want to do something of our own, which we would need to define, or do we wanna table it and, you know, we discuss this later and see if there's. Any gaps that need to be addressed, what do you guys think?
I don't have an issue with possibly having some kind of um, public outreach thing. If we feel it's needed to take the concepts of calibration or these things, even though supposedly Zone Co's going to. To dumb this down and I think Jim was just saying, he's been kind of like. Um, trying to say, hey, this is, you know, th- this is too above people's heads, you know, so on and so on. So, but I think if there's a need to even take a, a step further for people to really kinda understand how it's going to affect them. And if our. Because we're the quote planning commission. Does it, will we get a better response than possibly, hey, this is Zone Co coming out, um, you know, this is what. Do you follow what I'm saying? Does it, does it make it more intimate to the, to the effect of that people have a little more trust or a little bit more? I don't wanna say trust, that's not necessarily the right. But a little bit more intimate.
Yeah, I get what you're saying, it's like someone from inside the, the community is presenting what the work is done.
People that actually live here that, you know, are, are kind of help, trying to help, you know, the process and so with all that.
I, I have an agenda, I have an agenda, I wanna push on you guys, and I never make any bones about agendas, I wanna push on you guys, I have an agenda, I wanna push on you guys. I think that the public is really ill-informed about what public comment is. I, I, you know, I mean, y- y- you, you saw it with the, the PA legislature and the school, school uh, funding model today. You're, you're seeing it with, with all of the things in our society, like.
I agree.
And yet people go to Facebook and Nextdoor and they complain about this shit, so, so my point is.
I brought this up a little bit at the last meeting, if you guys remember, it, it was more of, not so much the public concept, but. How are we actually getting it out to the people so that they understand it more than it just being.
So there's, there's.
It is, it is, it is one of the hardest things in.
Right, but I'm, I, I think you were saying.
I wrote down, there are two things I wrote down as, as bullet points here, right? Um, Savvy says in the usual, uh, so, so, um, JP thinks it's uh, too academic and will go out shortly for a public comment, right? Um, at Savvy, you're challenged, this is this person that, so, so, so we're gonna distribute this thing, right? And it's going to appear as in the normal day and age of people is. Right, they're not gonna respond, there's, it's gonna blow up ass though.
Um, that was one of.
The calibration.
What I was getting at. I don't go on a computer.
So what if we put a QR code in the high rise and forest? Yeah, I mean, I mean, how many of the people actually are gonna, you know, you know, how many seventy-two year olds are gonna pull out their phone and. Load up a QR code, I, right, so. How do we teach them that the QR code is important? How do we teach them that they have the opportunity to speak about these things? How do we teach them what public discourse and public comment looks like when something is put out for public comment? Right, um, one of the things that we've done in the past is we've done, well, it's COVID, so we did webinars, like, we. We can still do webinars.
I have an idea.
Go ahead.
Cause I've been doing this kinda stuff for I'm T million years in different, in different veins. The only way that you can generally get people to come out is if you're offering them something, right? Okay?
Or fear.
Well, fear, yes, but is there a way that even if it wasn't via us? But it was via us slash Zone Co slash the borough, is there a way? I don't have to offer something, you know, uh, and then pull it in with.
Like a flat screen TV, what do you mean?
In, in theory, yeah, so, but for example, when, when, when the road for them, when the Rotary Club. All right, has their um, um, helmets to, I forget what they call it, but they do it out in the back lot here and they have. The police are there and then they have safety people and they're showing kids how important it is to wear a helmet and everything like that. They give away like free chocolate milk and um, orange drinks or whatever, okay? That, that has been supplied at some minimal cost by um, Turner Dairy or whatever. I know I'm crazy when I say this, but is there a way to? You know, uh. You know, give away a, you know, a, a, a free plant or, you know what I'm saying, like, and tie it in with. You know, everything that's going on and the changes and, you know, or, you know, or I, you know, or a little, I love Crafton flag.
Donation and your name is made to the volunteer fire company.
Yeah, what, I don't, I don't know what the, what the, the solution is, but maybe you can get more people out that way too versus. You know, in this day and age, people are so busy and so forth and so on, and I talked about it last meeting about how technology, you know, for a lot of people. You know, the last thing that they're doing is sitting down when they come home from, from work and sitting down in front of a computer or whatever, they're spending time with their kids or whatever. So a lot of the stuff just goes, you know, or, you know, it's, you know, we've all gotten to have it, I do it all the time and then I gotta go back in and look in my trash. Because I knew I ended up deleting something because we all get so much trash email, so much trash, um, uh, text messages. And all these different things, so if there's a way that we could reach out to them to, it, I don't know, it could be a, a magnet. Or, or keychain, I love Crafton, what, whatever it, it is, but something to try to. And it doesn't necessarily have to be something free, but a way to create the event to be, encourage the event to be the, the, the steering committee meeting. Or, or if it was a, a planning commission meeting, something to where, okay, you have free hot dogs and uh, cokes or something like that. You know, you follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
Made it in, in a community event versus it just being, oh, yet another meeting or another.
I think the thing we wanna make sure.
I might be crazy.
No, I think that's a good idea, I, I'll have to, um, two things I, that pop into my head, first, we have to make sure it's legal. Whatever we do, if you do a giveaway, you know, then it's, then it's a raffle or whatever.
Dog.
Right, or just, we'll figure out, I, I can figure that, I, you know, I can ask, so that's not a big deal.
It's kinda.
The other thing is, no, that's, the other thing is, we're gonna wanna make sure that if we do something like this, which is, yeah, and if it gets more people out, I think that's great. We just wanna make sure that we're getting out people, we don't wanna get out like all the eighteen year olds who don't own property or. We do. Hold on, hold on, or ten year olds, you wanna make sure that we have people that are either property owners or.
Right.
Um, are renters or something that, that zoning is something that could concern them or does concern them now. So that we get the right audience, so that we get people that care about Crafton and care about.
No, I, I agree.
Right, you're not just having people, like, if you do a TV, you might get.
No, that's why I'm saying like, you know, some kinda hot dogs and, and games.
Or even, you know, one thing that popped in my head again. Or even, you know, one thing that popped in my head again. I'm just throwing this out there, it's being reported, but what about a month of free taxes? Like, you know what I mean? You went, you go in for a raffle and you get a property. Now, we know that you're interested in properties.
That's a great idea.
And I don't know if that's legal.
So what I was gonna throw out there, when when you were, you know, like, or, you know, somehow team up the meeting or look at the scheduling. You know, maybe the rec board has like, you know, another car cruise going on.
Well, we have a fall event going on, so maybe shoulder on that event.
Right, or, you know, like the Rotary's doing the rib, you know, rib fest, you know, is there a way to? Work with these people who are already bringing people.
Right.
That are actual people that care about the community, cause the people that are going to the Rotary are peo- you know.
Well, that's a good thing, we can just set up a tenant, all those.
Well, that's what I'm.
Stuff out, yeah.
You know, I mean.
They're not offended by it, I think that's a.
It's just, you know, something like that, or, you know, at the rec board meeting, you can we somehow get zone, you know, at the some, at the fall event? Is there somehow to get zone code or the planning commission or whoever involved? And not only have a tent, but actually maybe, you know, if it's over in the park. Maybe there's, you know, I mean, you know, you have bleachers, there's a stage there, I mean, there's, you know, technology where you could put things up. You know, on a, on a, a, you know, a a white border or whatever, I don't know, I'm just throwing ideas out there to try to.
Cut you off.
I don't wanna be cut off, cause I got one more thing I wanna say.
You go, and I wanna cut you off.
Because one of the things that I will say, again, you were alluding to the amount of time that I've been here. Um and it's the same thing when you're involved in kids' sports and everything, it's always a small group of people. Who are making decisions for the whole.
Right.
Now, is that due to the fact that people just don't care? Or is it to, you know, or don't have the time? Um, and but I am with all you guys with. We somehow have to get more people involved, cause it just shouldn't be. A minimal amount of people making the decisions, because a lot of times when that's done, I think that. Decisions that are made are not necessarily, and at that time, I think that the people involved. Felt that it was for the best, but. It was a small group of people making the decisions.
I I wanna acknowledge what you just said and and say something as a follow up to it. Um, so there have been, when you joined planning commission, there were things that we labored over. On planning commission over the past several years, and your first comment was. I knew nothing about this, right? You're not digitally connected, you're not email connected, you're not any connected. But that's what you said, and we and we were like, well, wait a minute, and we were, we were able to dismantle your. Brief, your your frustration, we were able to smell it by saying that, well, here, let me show you. And we did, we showed you that the surveys and the the feedback, community feedback we had from the surveys. Like, like the uh the Crafton Boulevard project, for example, we had, we had, we had presentations that we'd done. We had great community participation, uh the Linden property um around the the the, when it was at its at heated moment, we had a, we had. Two, two rooms over, we had a big presentation, um the school board had an opportunity to present, they didn't. Um and it all fell apart at that, and, you know, we 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 talked about this, it was, you know, th- those were the kinds of things. So I think that doing something, while it may not reach. Uh thirty percent, let alone a hundred percent.
If you get ten percent of the population.
The fact that you did it and you presented the outreach, because you know what no one has done? Yourself included, you know what has done, said, oh. I read the Sunday paper and I only read the funny section, so if you only put a notice in the funny section of. No, no, if you only put a notice in the in the funny section of the Sunday paper, I would have seen it. Nobody's come back to us and said, oh, I had no idea that you did this, and if you only did it in this channel, if you only marketed in this channel, whatever, because. Wozniak and uh what's his name? Uh the the parent.
James Manji.
Manji, they they did a great, they did a freaking outstanding job, going to uh uh uh, yeah, Wozniak. He went around to the churches, got bills posted in their Sunday bulletin, we all, we all did lots. These were things that were well promoted, fairly well attended for what it was. And the response rate was ten percent. Right?
Probably wasn't that.
Yeah.
You had six hundred people respond to a survey? Oh, okay.
For sure, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so the survey I have are are dynamite, yeah, we we we. We have eight hundred families respond to one of the surveys.
That's great.
Yeah, so so so, yeah, we we were able to get it out, we were able to kind of, you know, rally the troops. Get these things done, but what I'm saying is, I don't know, and this is where I'm gonna play devil's advocate. I don't know, I don't care personally about zone, I know it needs updated, I know it's out of date.
That's what I was gonna say.
I could give a rat's ass, I'm like, I'm glad that we have hired a consultant. No, no offense to the selection process, I could have cared less, they were all quality applicants. Just get it done, right? So I don't know, at this stage, getting public feedback on the zoning. Process, I don't know how valuable that is, because what I'll ask as a question is. Theoretically, what could somebody take issue? And what could someone take issue with that would lead to a change in the zoning process?
The ADUs.
Yeah, parking.
Parking.
What are ADUs?
Uh additional dwelling unit?
Accessory dwelling.
Turning your garage into a.
A an apartment, like if you have a two-story garage like your neighbor does.
Um, I do too.
When you do too.
But mine is already a unit, so.
Okay, there you go, while making it into, making into.
So so we're, so 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 tho- those are, those are.
Those are potential.
And the potential of actually building one based on the square footage of your lot.
Exactly.
You know, if you have a big enough lot, you know, can you build an uh accessory dwelling unit on your, you know, like if you had a mother-in-law that wanted.
And these are already questions that are on the.
Right, right, right.
Well, these are already on the new website that has just been created.
Yeah.
Specifically asked these questions, of course, they originally asked them as, what do you want accessory dwelling units? Of which I was like, well, that's not gonna be very useful for ninety-eight percent of the population, so we've gone through and. And made sure the wording was.
You know, you know.
Academic.
Well, that's what you want, you want eighth grade level means it reaches eighty percent of the population, and that's generally where what your aim is.
Right. So if the consultant is doing all this.
Yeah.
Um, is there any value, I mean, uh other than, well, you know. Stirring the pot roughly, I like, and I'm I'm all for disruption, um but i- is there any value in this body? Doing anything beyond what the consultant is doing?
Oh, I I definitely think, you know.
So.
The trust we're talking about, the other thing is buy-in. If you're, if you're, once this goes to pass, let's say a bunch of people do get behind ADUs, let's say a bunch of people get behind. Uh mixed use in a certain district or whatever.
Right.
You wanna have, if you're making a change that concerns some people and and doesn't concern others or benefits some people and does. You wanna have buy-in, the more buy-in you have, the easier it is to pass a thing.
I'm glad you said that as the borough manager.
Yeah.
But you're biased, I'm calling that out. I'm calling that out, I'm calling it.
I think we're all biased.
But, well, no, 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 I I totally agree with what you're saying, but do you feel, you feel, you feel, I feel? Do we, Lydia, do we feel that this is the domain of the planning commission? To help the public understand this, when the, when the, the task and the stakeholder engagement sessions that have been procured. By council with the consultant are aimed at doing.
Well, I think yes and no, one, again, if it is too complicated in some. In some ways for people to really understand it, even though it's trying to get dulled down to, you know, an eighth grade concept. Um, I also think it's our job to um speak for the people. Who haven't necessarily, you know, do we feel that certain parts of R one should get changed to R two? Or R three, do we feel that certain parts of I one should go to this, or? I think that that is our job to try to police that in the concept of. Okay, like, yo, um, you know, cause, uh you know, while back when they did this back and. I don't know when the last time the zoning was, but, you know, they changed a lot of stuff. There was, it was, it was like twenty years.
Yeah.
Um, you know, when they did the whole overlay on Stuben Street, um, you know, different things like that, I think that's um, I think that's important. I think it's important, you know, that um we're the athletic field in different places like that, where we do have some. What I wanna say, some raw ground, to make sure that that is being zoned properly. To um help with fostering, um, you know, growths within the community, because we don't have a whole lot of area for growth.
So I'm gonna cut you off, because I hundred percent agree with everything you said, and if I missed anything, speak back in. Here's what I'm gonna say to you and you, cause you're being quiet on this matter, I wanna make sure that you guys are absolutely plugged in on this, so I'm gonna make a proposal to you. I think, because we have one more session under contract for this committee. You gotta, you get a lot more, right? Get a lot more because you're on. We have one more, we have one more contractually obligated visit from Zone Co and Yang. Um, I think, so based off of the calibration table and the. As it becomes kind of formalized into the crystallized vision of, so so the calibration table is kind of like the. The thing that's gonna become the code, right? I think that we should meet, maybe it's the next meeting, I don't know what the timing is here, but we should meet and receive. And if we have a meeting between then and now, I'm open to it, um, we should meet and receive what that looks like. Put us in non-academic layman terms with you as our translator, right? Um, and then we can decide based off of what they plan to push out for public comment. How we can then not undermine, but support what it is that they're doing. Right? So I think that the, my proposal to you is, let's invite Zone Co to to fulfill their last contractual. Um, update to us as the planning commission, uh before this goes out, wherever the timing needs to be. I make myself available, I'm sure we will, we'll do our best, right? Um, so that we can hear what it is. Think about it in terms of craft tonight terms and decide, is there something else that we can do to support? How to give public comment, how to understand this, how to digest, how to build trust? That this is not a out of town or higher, you know, gun, right? How to build trust in this whole process? That it's gonna make Crafton better, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Wouldn't it, I mean, I think it might be more beneficial to be pulled off, meet with Zone Co toward to- towards the end.
That's, I, that's what I'm saying, I thought, I think we're at the end, aren't we?
No, 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 no.
Oh.
This is the calibration.
Then there's more updates.
Right, the calibration will take, this is by far the longest part of the process, cause you're good digging into the details.
Oh, this is a terrible time for us to be talking about this.
Yeah, I I I I don't know that it's a terrible time for us to be talking about it.
It's a melee of, you know.
Yeah, I don't think now is the appropriate.
Going to a school district, other than schools, it's like going to a school district in July and say, what's my kid's schedule? Well, right now they have biology third period, oh, now it's seventh period, no, now it's ninth period, what, we don't even know my period, right? Like, all that stuff is switching, it's all like.
Yep.
It's all.
Yep, I agree.
So once that stuff set, once the calibration table has been calibrated, is, I thought, I thought that's where we were.
Yeah, no, we have a ways to go before that, this is literally.
So define ways to go.
Um, I'm currently looking up the uh, the um. Uh email I got from Jocelyn with the timeline, so let me uh.
Is the joint uh commission, the joint zone commission planning any public outreach?
Um, uh, I, we haven't even met, I mean, the last meeting, we didn't even come, so I can't say, I think the steering committee is really the place. Oh, oh, is that what you meant? I'm sorry, I didn't know that's what you meant. I, we're meeting with them to talk about the, the, they they haven't even seen the calibration table yet.
Okay.
Um, and there, uh, we're intent is to schedule a meeting from August seventh to August fourteenth or whatevers. Um, and to find out, um, you know, to have that meeting and figure out what the next steps are.
Okay, can you give us an update once you had that meeting to see what their ideas are, what? Their feeling when it comes to public engagement, and then like if there is a gap, then we can kind of step in and help.
Yep.
See what we can do to um bolster that public engagement.
Yep.
I really, I think we do have a a role in that, but I do think that steering committee also has a very large role.
Right. Well, that's just, like, there there's, there's a, there's a, an appointed committee for a reason.
Right.
And for us to do duplicate work looks bad, but if there's something that we can do to support underneath it. What, so what I'm hearing is this, this is a long way from a five, so the calibration table is just kind of a draft plan. And then there'll be a lot of stuff, maybe, right? Um. Really, you think there'll be?
Here we go, here's the timeline right there.
So what I'm.
Um, August, so. And this is um staff reviews and consolidate chapters in a one full draft review, you're not talking about until December till the next.
No, the public engagement for for public review is January, it was the last cell.
Okay.
You look over to the last cell. So we should plan, we should invite um a presentation just to make sure that we're all. We've read the plan, we understand the plan, we have any questions, need to resolve, so for that January timeline.
Yeah, so you're not even looking, this, this process of going back and forth, you got four months. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, in my opinion, what do you think?
I agree.
Yep.
You, okay. So the current, right, so I'm just gonna put this in here, the current. Project table from JP. Looks to January for public. Engagement. E C, E C might consider. How we can. November.
Yeah. Jim, that um map that you sent in last month, am I able to take that, am I able to tweet? Does the borough have any copies of that, like the word that they're giving out to people at all?
Yeah, well, I mean, I can give, I have, we haven't given it out to people, physical, in physical copies, but we, I can give you a physical copy. If you wanted me to print some off, like when, you can stop by tomorrow and grab some.
Well, but it would only be one on eight half by eleven or whatever.
No, I can put it on whatever paper you want.
Uh, you can't, you don't have to build it to do like a twenty-four by thirty-six or whatever.
No, not, okay, I can't do whatever size you want, but I can do, but I can do tabloid, which is eleven by seventeen, I mean, they're pretty big sheets of paper. They're not, yeah, they're not that size, but, yeah, I mean, they're very readable and understandable.
Yeah, but I I should be able to take what you sent me, and I should be able to go up to like.
Yeah.
Washington Reaper Graphics, whatever they're called now, and have them print one out.
Yeah, but we, we also can take payment to print stuff, so if you wanna, it's five cents a paper, but for this, this is a public outreach thing, you can just do it for you.
Yeah, but it would still only be so.
Oh, right, yeah, if you want them bigger, yeah, yeah, if you want them bigger, you have to take it somewhere else.
You agree with that statement? You'll keep us updated for changes.
Yep.
So that's, we discussed it, that's the update to the zoning project, it's moving forward, you can ask, take your names, lots of. Lots of stuff that needs to be addressed, lots of addresses being stopped, and we are just, just on a outside of it, looking in. And if anybody needs anything from us, we are here.
Yep.
Um, if they can think of a way that we can contribute, but there's the, there's the committee, there's the consultant, there's the council. There are three bodies that are already actively involved in this process, we don't need too many books in the kitchen, in in the kitchen. If for some reason come November or so, we see that we can. Maybe build trust within the community, we can do something, we can, you know, whatever, starting in November. November, me, we'll, we'll kind of add it to the agenda, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about, you know, is there something that we can do or not? And we'll revisit it that way, we all agree?
Yep, and or.
Amen to that, move on, Emmer.
And I was just gonna bring back what you tabled, if, you know, they, if they're, if you feel or our body feels that. One of us should be. One of us should be a little bit more active with it and would, you know, be pushed back into the steering committee. I or one of us would want to be a part of that.
I would want to hold you, um, just. No offense, Don, you're already on council. Um, so what I'll say to you two is, given this, given this, look. We have an overworked, underpaid, overtaxed member of the Crafton public who's a Crafton businessman. Right? Who would be an outstanding participant, even though his participation may have been remiss. Over the past year or so. Um, if there would be an opportunity to reinstate his involvement. I would um, recommend, and I can do this as a recommendation to council, we can just talk as humans. Um, that maybe we think about adding him back.
No, absolutely. If you, if you want to.
Well, it just matters whether or not the committee itself is not too big or whatever, blah, 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 so.
I have no idea whether there's.
Right, but I'm saying, so it may not be something.
How do we answer this question? So that, so we just know, how do we answer? Do I make a formal, I recommend that Matthew Greiner. Be uh, whatever reinstated. Fifty-eight, fifty-eight, Nutbar Street.
Did you ask to be removed at one point?
Uh, well, yeah. Kirsten, I think at the time I told her that, cause I'd missed a couple of meetings and that. Again, if Vince wanted to set out what he did today, I would have been calling you to say, do we have a meeting today? Um, and that's kind of what happened with the whole steering committee thing and so.
Maybe just, let's talk to Kirsten and see.
I think I, I still get emails.
Recommendation for the time.
Still get emails.
And make this just as a conversation, because it may not be that he's been formally removed from any list, okay? And you just don't check your emails.
Well, I mean, I get emails, but it's not like I really pay attention.
I'm, I'm just resting because I, I just, that, that really just is funny. That's funny. That's really fun. So you're still.
I might be, I don't know.
Is this recording? He's still on the committee.
I don't know. Hold on a second. Let me look. And see if anything, I gotta do a search on my email. See if anything comes up. I probably don't have a perception. I don't even know when I would look. I don't even, guys, I'm sorry. It just, that shows you how like unplugged in I am to. Technology. I really don't pay.
Well, I think that's one of the difficulties with getting information out there is, you don't pay attention necessarily, but you can probably read some things.
Oh, yeah, I do.
Right, and it's to that point of the, the, the cartoons. Now, there are so many different angles that people can listen to, and then even if you take the. Six hundred people that actually do care about zoning, you've got to get to all those six hundred people. And now you're talking about a much smaller group, so it is, it's just challenging.
It is. I mean, and we talked, you know, again, you know, not, you know, I've said it a couple of times, but that, we talked about some of that stuff last month.
Yeah.
Um, it's just, it's, it's so hard to actually. Get people to listen and, and actually carve time out of their, other, of their day. Um, and I think it's horrible. Um, I, I mean, that's nothing derogatory to people in general. But where our society has gone is just, you know, the people are uninvolved. I mean, they just. You know, yep, if, you know, especially if you have children, I mean, you know. You're running the baseball, softball, dance, um, you know, uh, you know. Uh, chess club, whatever, you know, whatever the, you know, your child's into and, you know, and, you know. We're just so involved in all those types of things, you know, and. It, it, I think it's a wonderful thing because, you know, people are taking a very active role with their children and, and, you know, and. Those things, but. So many, so many, so many hours in a day. That's why, you know, I threw out the idea of, you know, trying to. You know, even if it's not us, it's just a Zone Co thing, to somehow. Make it an event versus it just being something you're carving out to go to a meeting to something, you know, that may or may not, so.
They were specifically hired because of their focus on public engagement.
Oh, yeah, no, no, and, and, and I don't want to say, they've been doing, I mean, they do, everybody's been doing a great job. But he doesn't touch everybody.
We want to lean on to like fully manifest that public engagement. That's all. I mean, just because.
I mean, just like, well, you know, the, you know, the car stores, you know? Come out on a Saturday, you know, we got free hot dogs and, you know, you go in and they got balloons for the kids and.
It's just anything that's from Crafton.
It's the world we live in.
What do you mean? I don't know, like Wes McLean has the, the red, red hot dog, like, you know, like.
Oh, you mean something that was uh, iconic, iconic to this area? Well, one of the most iconic things I have to say in my day of Crafton was the United Methodist Church funnel cake. At the Fourth of July every year, um, when we had to celebrate.
What's special about their funnel cake?
It was just, there was just, it, they had funnel cakes before you even knew what funnel cake was, right? And the line would be, you know, five wide, twenty deep, you know, where, and then you, you know, the. As far as all Scots were selling hot dogs, you know, there were only a couple of people online, it was just.
We could certainly through this process, playing ownership of the funnel cake, isn't it? Correct. The original craft.
The original Craft United Methodist funnel.
I'm just saying, so, okay, so let's, we're tabled, we're tabled until this becomes more realistic.
You know, I like.
I don't know how many people in January are gonna be, December and January are coming out for funnel cakes, but maybe, I don't know. It sounds like a.
Pittsburgh Ballet Theater used to.
Fried Christmas cookies? I have.
Perform on a wood stage.
Let's move on to Brick Streets if you don't mind.
All right, Brick Street Project. So I think we left off last time talking about, once again, public engagement. Um, so I think we're looking at the survey.
Surveys to the street.
So I have, I've taken that survey that um, Mount Lebanon created.
Uh, that's right, you had brought that up, Ben.
Yep, yep, and so I adapted it um, for our use. I have not yet put it in the survey form, but we do have a newsletter going out. In a week or two, and that will be included in the newsletter, so there'll be QR codes on there. You can go take that survey. We'll also put it on the website now, granted. That's only one.
Front page uh, action.
We, I can check. We don't, we don't have it laid out yet, so.
I'm just thinking, again, one of those things.
I think one of the things I was.
Same vein of everything we're talking about.
Yeah, I need to talk to the mayor to confirm this, but one of the thing, I haven't written uh, my kind of like, you know, monthly statement for that, for this one. I think probably one of the things I'll do is I'll talk about public engagement and just say that we're doing a, so I'll have an article in there talking about why we're doing more surveys. Um, because of the intent, then if we do a survey on this one, is to also do one on the next one, and it can be directed at the. At the Zone Co, you know, at the, at this, so we can also have a, you know, unless there's something else pressing.
I think front, front page news, if anything, if it's anything that we think that would be, um, uh. Important to the sense of the integrity of what Crafton is. I think if there's a way to have it be kind of a front page piece, you know, or a half page, front page. Uh, because just like anything else, you know, a lot of people watch, you know, even with the newspaper, which we don't really have anymore, but look at the headline, right?
Coming out again, apparently.
Well, but you know what I'm saying, but you look at the headline and.
Right, it's above the fold, right. If it's not above the fold, then you're not gonna.
Maybe I might go back to the sports section or whatever, but um. And I'm just gonna bring this up because this is somebody uh, uh, Crafton resident. And I said something to the effect, um, uh, I have to go to a meeting and they said, what are you gonna mean for it? I said, well, I'm on a planning commission. And they said to me, well, what are you planning? I said, well, one of the issues that we'll be talking to about tonight is Brick Streets. And the first thing out of that person's mouth was, I hope they don't get rid of the Brick Streets, because they asked about Belvedere, because they grew up on Belvedere. And I said to them, I said, well. There are, that's part of the conversation about creating a uh, brick bank and, you know, trying to preserve as many as we can. And that person who is my age said that that is, you know, one of the best things of crafting. Just throwing it out there to you guys. We talked about it last week. Um, you know, and we talked about some of the costs involved and everything, but, you know, that's from somebody. Who, you know, just, was just randomly talking to me about, you know, and how much they cared about the Brick Streets.
Right, right.
Well, I think a way too, instead of just doing like the Savvy Citizen app or the newsletter, we post on like, yeah, this Crafton Facebook pages, they have a couple thousand people on there.
Yeah.
And it's gonna target a lot different audience too, or like a younger generation like us.
The Crafton Neighborhood News Page, I know there's a couple other ones.
Well, you guys, well, I'm not on those and I won't get on those, um, but if, but we are gonna start, we're in the process of setting up a social media policy. But in the meantime, if you guys, when we put that QR code out, you can share it. Cause that QR code will also link to an article on the website, so we can have, you can link it to anything, but I need. Everybody else to put it out.
So with the QR code, does that, like, say if I put on my email, that allows me to not vote again on that, like, it only like.
No, it'll be you, that's a good question, and I'm not sure how we'll set it. I, I'm honestly not sure. Um, it could be that multiple people could vote. Um, the QR code is not gonna be tied to a specific, because it's not gonna be specific to you.
Okay.
Um, but there might be, I don't know how Woo-Fu works. That's the app we use. It's an app by Survey Monkey. I, I'm not sure how you limit it to just, you know, we might have to put in, you might, we could put it, so you have to put in your address or whatever, showing your resident.
Then you would have to get ciphered out from there that somebody, you know.
Right, if they put, yeah.
Twenty voted, you know, a hundred times, you keep seeing fifty-five North Lynnwood come up or whatever the address is.
Or if you put your email address and it logs the email, so that later on you can use it as like an email blast to get stuff out too. Where it's not just social media and.
Pretty cool.
Yeah, and we could also, and that's something, that's a good idea actually to put in there is uh. Um, this is something that we, I think was in a past newsletter, which is a request to not get a physical newsletter. Um, we could also have that in there too.
Yeah, well, and then this goes into everything we were just talking about. I love that idea. If there's a way to do that, where you have to put your email in there, because I keep yelling at the school about it too. Now, it's all great that the school has Cougar Connection. It's all great that, you know, the borough has Savvy Citizen. But you still have to physically go on there and click it and go through it.
We don't get any of the emails from Savvy Citizen.
No, no, no. But what I'm saying is, is no, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, is with this particular thing. Again, these are things that people, you know, that um, are possibly candidates that, that. Care about the other things that we're speaking of.
You're shoving it to their face.
You're putting it right there and it's coming across personalized to them.
Right.
So, so basically.
Oh, you're talking, you're talking about a constant contact or.
Like, yeah, just like getting an email list from this QR code, people sign up and then using that as an email blast.
Yeah.
For other re- reasons, send information out to people.
Yep. So that is something that is on the list, but that is, it's, it's not gonna happen effectively enough by the time this project is over.
I, no, no, no.
Because building, building an email list takes a very.
I'm talking about for future endeavors of, you know, other big projects that come up or, you know, it could be a little project or big project, but it could be. You know, you, you were talking about, you know, hey, if you get that ten percent, well, let's just say that. The ten percent of people that really care are the same people that are, you know, they're, they're the ones filling out this survey for the Brick Street concept. Well, we know that we can grab that same ten percent by building that list. And then from there, if we get another ten percent from just. Savvy Citizen or from uh, you know, uh, Facebook, now we're getting twenty percent.
Right.
You follow what I'm saying? We got our, we got our captive audience, ten.
Right, and you're building it every time we.
And then every time we do something like that, and so that's a great idea. All right, so you, now I have elected you to be the Facebook uh, person. And then when the QR code comes out, you're gonna put it on, even though we're not there yet, you're gonna be the one that's gonna put it on there, so. Whenever I go on Crafton Neighborhood News, I'm gonna see you and I'm gonna be able to see that QR code and I'm gonna, it'll take about three seconds.
And one more update to the Brick Streets, we did at the last council meeting, um, they did approve the Broadhead Project. Um, which did include, which initially did not include replacing any of the Brick Streets, but now has it replacing Cornell. North Lynnwood, or not, no, uh, North Emily and uh, part of Lynnwood. Very small portion of Lynnwood.
Yeah, well, it's, it's only that little piece right there. So, so they're gonna keep.
But not Belvedere. Not Belvedere. It was four hundred thousand dollars additional just to move over there, so they're not doing over there.
No, but they're just stopping at the steps though, right?
Right.
So from the steps to basically.
Right, so tank traps in front of my house persist.
Huh?
So tank traps in front of my house.
The, yeah, that, that part of the Brick Street is not gonna be uh, addressed in this time, at this time, no.
Are you for that or?
I'm fully opposed to it. I mean, how do you do half a street? I don't, F do you do half a street?
Well, and it's not one of my, my point is, would you rather have, would you rather have it asphalted or brick? Is my question to you, just as a personal person.
I would rather know, I would rather know what the maintenance costs of that street have been. Over the past seventy-five years. Cause I have a really good idea. They don't. I, 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 I would rather know what the maintenance costs of that street have been over the past seventy-five years. Let alone over the past hundred and ten years that street has been embedded.
The point.
So, so, you know, because a lot of this survey stuff is, is impacted by, you know, downtown Pittsburgh where they have. You know, semis driving over bricks and those sorts of things. We have local traffic, right? There are thirty-three potholes on that street that need to be replaced, that have been repaired. Um, and none of them outside of the three in front of my house, because I'm a dick apparently. Um, have been addressed. So I have to go home every day and deal with my neighbors and say, who the hell are you? Because I have a nice smooth street in front of my house, because I do this. Whereas everybody else on the street has potholes in front of their home. Right? That, that's, that's my point.
My question was, what, which one would you rather have?
Um, hon- honestly, I, I would rather have a hybrid. So I just, I just spent the better part of the past uh, month in, in, in Europe. And I see hybrid streets that have brick and paving within, and they have brick sidelines and paving center lines. And they, they do these, and, and they're beautiful and they're easy to take. They look great, they look like, they have a hybrid kind of component to them. This is not something that our borough has been willing to think about. It's just like either all, like, all new impervious pavers, blah, 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 blah. Or it's too hard to manage the recycling of all these bricks into a, you know, cohesive plan. So we're just gonna. And that, those were those, those were those costs.
I, I, I wanna know which one you like best. That's all I wanna know, as a, as a friend. Do you like the Brick Streets better or do you like?
I, I, I like the, from, from the standpoint of the value of my home, bricks in front of my house are more valuable. She's still the natural. From the standpoint of my kids, yeah, they wanna play, they wanna play dead hockey out in front of the house.
I understand that.
They wanna play, and a pavement would do that, but guess what? They're not doing that. They're not doing that because they're stopping short. Right? So rather than do the whole street like a grown man would do, they're doing this half-assed thing. Because of the money, because of the money, rather than figuring out a way to pay for it.
Well, we, we, we did discuss that last week too. About the tax. Remember we were talking about that, the possible, that was gonna be in the survey, whether or not you would be willing to pay a brick tax.
That's gonna be, that's gonna be in the center, yeah. How much you're willing to pay for it.
Because I, I, I'm not kidding you, that whole street can be made normal, not like Oregon, not like somebody's other street. That whole street can be made normal with thirty-three potholes repaired. Thirty-three. Oh. Put your state measure after a rainstorm into them. Thirty-three, that's it. And it takes exactly one day to repair a pothole or two, depending on how close they are. That's my point. So over the past five years, we could have had a good chunk of this done. Since I've encouraged council to. And say, in, not go along with the current Public Works dude. Who shot it down. I, we had in the budget, we had a budget, a new truck and a brick patrol. Two guys, one existing guys, plus a new hire, net new hire in the budget. To go and fix these potholes, not just on my street, but around the town, to keep these brick streets going. As opposed to cataclysmic reclamation of them. And I think that that's still. And I think that that's still entirely possible and can be done. So, that's my opinion of it.
Which budget was that in?
Uh, eighteen or nineteen, I don't know.
Do you know why it didn't get, what happened, do you know what happened to it?
Because one guy got Mayor Bloom to say, okay, we can't do this, and then. There were certain people in council, well, the mayor says we can't do it, and we can't do it, and Freddie was all over it, so.
Alright, so.
Yeah, I, I answer for it.
I would dream every brick street that we have, if it was up to me.
So I, I, um, I think we'll wait and see what the survey results say, and kind of go from there, cause the survey, what public want. What will kind of push us towards.
But some of it, it'll all be too late.
Unfortunately for Bro- the Broadhead Project, we are gonna use a few brick streets, some of them are really bad, disrepair.
Really bad, and the ones on steep slopes are um not necessarily the best, I mean, for steep slopes. It is generally understood that steep slopes are not good places for bricks, from a, from a. Repair's perspective, from a danger perspective, they are much more dangerous for sliding. We have to salt them much more often, you know, and they're not. They have to be, when you're doing this and we're removing, um, the whole goal of this is to remove um stormwater. And you have to recurve the streets, so Belvedere can't be just repaired by potholes, it has to be redomed. So that it uh sheets the water properly, so it would have to be, it would have to be, um, it has to be completely rebuilt anyway. Um, which is what they looked at, now, we didn't consider pavers, um, pavers are definitely cheaper, but they also don't last as long. Um, and you know, there's a lot of, we don't know, because a hundred and ten years ago, when they started doing Brick Streets. They didn't put salt, in fact, they didn't do salt until about fifty years ago, and salt is much more damaging. Um, than it used to be, so there's a lot of unknowns still with Brick Streets. Um, and generally speaking, they're repaired when they're already in good shape, they don't tend to be repaired when they're um. When they need complete reconstructions, so we really don't know if it's a ground issue. Um, that streets that get poor like Belvedere and some of those streets on the hills. Um, that it was never a good place to put them in the first place, we, you just don't know, it's hard to know that information, um. There's just not a lot, not enough good research on it yet. Record keeping in his, in the history of the borough is the one thing. Um, and we're working on improving that. I understand, go forward. None of what I'm saying is impacting you.
Oh, yeah, we don't know.
It's a legacy of the past fifty years, nobody knows, nobody knows what has been done.
Well, Gateway does.
Gateway's been our engineer for sixty years. We're working on that.
I still wish we can keep every street, but.
Answer your questions, I prefer bricks on every street that there are bricks.
I wish, me too, but anyhow. I still would, I still wish Churchill was right.
I, I, I will say that, that there are streets that have historic landmark like we have, we have a church that's uninhabited right now.
Is it back empty again?
It's, it's been empty for, for the better part of the decade, thirty thousand square foot, thirty thousand square foot church. That will end up, will end up either being the domain of the borough. Which can be our new library, um, or it will be something special, which will be lovely, either way. Either way, um, the cost of knocking it down.
Is he out of there again?
Performing arts group goes there.
I just, I was just curious.
There's no one that goes. I just talked to somebody a couple weeks ago that they meet there. At, at the church on. The group that used to be the performing art group that on that corner, that, that corner building on uh Noble.
Oh, they just left, you talking about the uh Crafton, um, what was it, Crafton Music Center, Crafton?
I would, I would get that in writing and validated by Tony. Because that, that is not, that is hundred percent not true.
Oh, okay, that's just what I was told.
It's William.
He, yeah, I mean, he opened up that, the, the music school there. And then now.
It's probably been two months since I talked to him.
Yeah, and that's about, I mean, cause now it became a, um, now it's a hair salon, but he was in there for a long time.
Yeah, but that's what he told me, he was me.
Got bigger or he couldn't afford rent or whatever. Anyhow, okay.
Alright, and last thing I just wanna talk about is, I think in May, we had discussed goals and topics, April, May. Um, so I'm just wondering, are there any other projects that we wanna start working on or looking into? Are we happy with uh where we're at, what, what's the group feeling?
I, I think, I think the. Well, I was just gonna pick up on something that you talked about before, and I don't know if it would have to go with the whole. Thing that you were talking about with the uh Parks um project, but you had brought up about the trail. Um, and you had some meetings and things like that, that there was, you were working on doing some switchbacks down there. Was that part of what you were talking about that wasn't happening because of the funding or? Um, and how could we, as the planning commission, help to foster? Some of, I guess, I wanna go backwards to what you were saying earlier about. You know, the, 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 the park recreation plan. And about the things that you feel that could be done with little or no money. And how as a planning commission could we help to um foster? Some of these things to get completed that would not take money, but would just take volunteers and so on and so on. Um, is, would that fall in our purview of what we do as a planning commission? Um, to help with that, the, the, you know, the part of the new parks plan and stuff? Or?
And I'm sorry, can you repeat part of what I missed?
Before you had come. Okay, um, there was, there. Eric had, uh, and a couple other people got together, and Eric was talking about, and I, and. That how like some of these things that the Parks and Rec Board um had put together, you know, in the new plan. That could be done, and he touched on it a little bit in the beginning of our meeting. Of that there were a lot of things, and you had mentioned that there's some state funding that's being worked on and things like that, but there was like this. Uh, what I wanna say, a disconnect, um, uh, I don't wanna say disconnect, but there were things that could get done without. All of that, might need some borough resources for some of it, but a lot of it could be done with just. You know, some, some, you know, elbow grease, you know, some grit and some people, you know, showing up to do it. And there was a trail that they were working on, I thought it was off of Ewing, is that right? Ewing, and you guys were working on.
And that one is, and that one, and that one does require more money and time. Because there are several D, if we do build a trail there. Um, as it was discussed, the switchback trail, it crosses over several open streams. Um, that are coming out of the hillside, which each required DEP permits, um, so it's not a simple, that's not a simple.
Well, I was just using that as, as, as a, a thought process too, is there some things that we can? As a planning commission, help to foster. Um, getting some people involved in doing some of these one, you know, some things that were on that, that, you know, wouldn't um. Wouldn't cost the borough a whole lot of money or worry about DEP switchback or DEP permits and things like that. So that's what I was asking. Was my bigger. Are there some things that we can get involved in?
Well, so, so I'll, I'll pose to you then, um, is there an opportunity um to connect? The Crafton Trail, now, do we, do we not have access to the um? So if you start sled, sled riding, you know. And you go down. You end up on a roadway there, that's a trail.
Well, it used to be a road under there, but. There still is a road under there, but.
No, 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 there's a, there's just an improved Jeep trail there that follows Crafton across from the old uh.
There's a road under there.
So, so the question is, oh, there's a road under there? Help me understand that with your, with your tribal knowledge, I, I, I don't understand, no, no one has ever said that there's a road under.
There's a road under there. Goes all the way down to where it gets skinny, and then it picks up on the other side and goes all the way down around Duncan's property. There's a road.
That road used to be like a maintained road by a municipality?
No, it was maintained by the Army Corps of Engineers.
Oh, that's what we're talking about, okay, so that road, it's not a road, it's a, it's an access road maintained by the Army Corps.
But there's a road.
But it's not, it's, but you don't have a right to use it.
I don't know if I do or I don't.
And, and we have to get, we legally are required now to gate that, and we are, they're gonna pay for it, the Shortiers Valley Flood Authority isn't paying for that. But it'll be gated at both ends though, so that you can't have access to the road that goes on the levee that's done by the Army Corps. But right now, Al Cassan has been driving on it, which has been an issue.
Waste rider bites on it.
Sure, sure, and, and what you did, no one, no one complained about, but the, 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 what do you say, the fact of the matter. Trying to pull up a picture, the fact of the matter is that we don't have a right, Crafton, this valley. Does not have a right to say, come enjoy our trail. Because it's not our trail, now. A good portion of it is on a levee. Is gonna say yes, all of his stuff, the Corvage, but they have not said yes because of. How these things take time. Okay, that's the net net, so, once, once we have. There's no reason why we shouldn't expect to have access to that levee trail. And at that point. Phase one could be to connect that levee trail to cut the corner and come into the backside of CIT. That could be an option. Phase two, you were there that day. But I can always put the, I can already put the. Quash that, we've already been told by CIT that they don't want a public trail accessing their thing. Cause they already have parking issues, and we don't wanna encourage people parking down there. The way it's currently set up, CIT, Sam and um. Is telling us, they want free and perpetual access to phase two of what you're talking about, which is the dog park. So CIT wants everything and will concede nothing. No, I, we haven't, no, that's not true, that's not fair. It's not fair. I'm speaking in my opinion. Okay, well, you haven't been a part of the conversations and. And I'm, I'm always willing to be a part of the conversation. I wouldn't say that that's a fair statement. There has been no discussion about giving up one or taking the other, they've not talked about conceding or not conceding, we haven't even had the conversation with them. So I wouldn't, it just wouldn't stay.
But the issue right now is the parking thing, and then you're figuring all that out.
And they were more than willing to have a conversation, they just wanna, they just want a fair, you know, a fair. Interaction if we had, yeah. The issue, the issue of, of that connector bottlenecked to the parking situation. The issue of the dog park bottlenecked to CIT's um access to that field. Apparently there. There are occasions during the year, bear freely to say, where CIT uses um that small field. In the main park, that main park was what was. Um, postulated as where the dog park would go, because it's close to the parking lots, there are all the, all the other amenities there, there, there's fences, there is there. So, nothing can be done. And nothing will be done until somebody takes a hardline stance with negotiating CIT and their long term. Want to use that park now, um, it's been postulated by you and others that maybe a dog park gets moved to the other side, but you put a fence on the other side. And then you've now mitigated the ability to you, you've, you've prevented the ability to use the sled riding, you know, as a sled ride, because it'd be offensive. So. There's only so much land.
Alright, well, let's just go reverse back, he was asking, Vince was asking if there was any other things that uh we wanted to tackle or whatever.
I, I think that, I think that escalating the dog park. As a top priority of the planning commission is a natural and smart thing to do, the, the, the community. Um, spoke loudly through the park plan that they wanted. Um, very loudly, um, and it was placed into the plan. And there has been. Minimal progress against doing something against that plan, I understand the reclamation of the other field and. All those, those other things may or may not be in process, but in, in cold hard facts and reality. That dog park. Could be open in two weeks.
Could we put it where the goofing golf place is?
Um, we're not sure what's happening with that property yet, so it'd be premature to do something on that property because. Uh, if we make major improvements to that property and the school board and the borough decide to sell it. Wouldn't be a place to do it, and right now that's being used for that still, and I do plan to have a. They're not, obviously.
That's old time, that's old, that's old Craftonites trying to hold on to something that's, you know, that was a great thing when it came, but it's, it's time to do something.
And, and that's the, the fact that what it is now is, you were, i- is regardless, um, but. We also are gonna have a conversation.
That'd be a great spot for a dog park as well.
Who hasn't had big vacant lot on Park Street for the whole school?
That is owned by. He owns all five, there's six lots there, I think, and he, and he had, at one point, potentially had. Someone going to the townhouses there, but fell through with the last.
That was a long time ago now.
Yeah, so I don't know, it's, it's still owned by. Yeah, and I think that a, a lot of people, there, it, we, we've heard a lot of questions about it.
What kinda uses, um, cause I don't go up there too often, what kinda uses uh Sotlinwood Park at these days?
Um, it's still probably the least used of the parks, um. But there are people, there's a guy who plays basketball there a lot, and there's a couple other people that bring their kids there, but that's all I've heard.
Well, I mean, that's another potential area of, you know. Um, has. The, again, because, you know, there is limited, what is the um? The possibility of, you know, when you um on Shortiers, you know, when it turns into, uh, before, you know, before you gotta make the left for it to be Woodlawn. I don't know if that's still called Shortiers all the way up until you get to the dentist office or not, I don't know what they call that part of the street right there. Well, it, it eventually goes into.
Oh, you're talking about Baker's Acres. It's probably now called Baker's Acres.
Is that what they call it?
Yeah, cause Baker, he owned a good portion of that.
Is he the one that's selling that?
He did sell it.
Oh, he sold it?
Yeah, we own it.
I didn't know the borough wanted. That'd be another great place.
Four months ago.
That'd be another great.
We're working on buying, there's one last piece of it, yeah, we might be able to acquire um from Honeywell, it was owned by a pit lane corp.
Cause there's nothing you can do with that land with the water and everything, it's there in the.
Down in the bottom.
Yeah, well, and there's a lot of, all that creek runs all the way up through and goes all the way over into Oakwood. Um, so there's a lot of wetlands and things like. Yeah, so, I mean, that would, you know.
No parking access if you wanted to have a dog park.
But you could make it. Yeah, there's.
I thought you said you didn't have access. No, we have access, we have, well, there, we already own the parking lot.
And that's a paper street, so.
Well, it's not, it's a trolley line, it's not.
Or trolley line, but.
So it's an owned.
But it's owned.
It's owned. And that, and that company is, there, I'm, I mean, talks of them right now, there's a good chance we're gonna be able to buy it, it's just how much.
Well, just, but, I mean, that would be potentially another place.
Down on that being the home of the dog park. That could be, that could be a price for a dog.
And it's kinda nice because it's, you know, it, it's not a lot of homes around there and everything like that, and it's, it's got a little bit more.
And there's less, that's the problem with Crafton Park right now, is there's so many competing interests. And we've gotta make sure that we have the conversation with all the competing interests, and we haven't done that yet, that's on the, that's on the lock of. My, my biggest concern with Crafton Park is the fact that it's unforced, and right now it's being used as a dog park. I'm, I'm aware. And, and, you know, my kids can't play soccer there because it's dog shit. Right, um, so, they don't have a, 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 what do you call it? Pickup spit, whatever, whatever the. They had a name. An open space, they, they don't have, there is no space that is fifty by fifty or thirty by thirty. For kids to play soccer or frisbee ball, of, of, of ultimate frisbee or something like that, there is no space in that park for them to do it. Um, year round, the place on the main stage is the main stage, and then in the winter, it's got the. The stuff for the, 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 what do you call it, the, the lights display and, you know, so, so that, that flat area is. The stuff for the, 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 what do you call it? The, the lights display and, you know, so, so that, that flat area is, is gone. And the window of time where it's available is now used by the football, right? Or I hope they're paying for it.
For what? They're playing football?
Yeah, they're doing football practices on that space.
In Crafton Park?
Yeah, for sure.
Well, in the, in the, uh, ball field?
Yeah. No, not the ball field.
Where?
Uh, it's from the main stage.
Oh, I didn't know it.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. They're just spilled across the street. Use extra space.
They don't do that anymore.
They did it last fall.
Did they do it last fall? For sure. Cause they, did they get kicked out of the high school yet?
No, 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 they're over there too. They're just, that was.
No, the high school, high school.
Oh, I don't know anything about the high school, high school.
Cause my kids, they, I mean, we practiced all over the place. I mean, we've done.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they're, no, they were over. They were over Linden.
Well, yeah, then they got rabble calls there and then we used to have to do Crafton Park.
Yeah. My, my, my point is like, I, I find it, I find it offensive. That I live on top of the hill, I can't kick my kids out to go down the hill to kick a soccer ball on a flat piece of land, even though there's lots of flat land there. Um, it's either used by someone else and they can't, or it's full of dog shit. I, I find that egregious. Right? That's a failing of the council, that's a failing of the municipality, that's a failing of everybody involved. Because people are allowing their dogs, because we're allow, our community is allowing dogs to run in, in that space. Because.
They're not allowed to throw in that space though.
But they're not being stopped. They're not being stopped. They're not being stopped.
Would you want like police, uh?
Yes. No, no matter how many times I call, like, I can only do so much.
You've called to have them ticketed?
Yes, I, I had a call for the, the ATVs that ride. The ATVs that ride up and down my property and the property, oh yeah, for sure. Yeah, I called, called, called up the office multiple times a year. But those are legitimate things that can be contained. But we don't have a clear and concise vision as to what that field is gonna be. If it's gonna be a baseball field, let's clean it up. Make it look like a baseball field and keep the dogs off of it. So if my kids wanna go down and play soccer on the baseball field, they're welcome to. And they don't have to worry about coming out with dog do on their shoes, right?
Well, that field's been a matter of, of argument for many years now.
You know what I mean?
One CIT went and did their thing. And it became, let's call it private.
Oh, their organization.
Their organization, um, then, um, craft, so CIT always took care of that field. Uh, by the stage, by Afton, always took care of it.
Right. And when was it, when was it named Jason Westfield? Like, cause that was an Afghan, that was Afghan vet, so that must've been in two thousand. That must've been after CIT went private, cause they went private in two thousand.
Can we just reach out to the family and see if we can do something to relocate?
Work, yeah, we'll get there.
But can we?
So I wouldn't do that.
No, you should, you should have the elected council do that.
So, um, I wouldn't wanna, you know, so whenever CIT moved down.
And you wanna have the course of action if you're gonna have one, if you're gonna ask.
So CIT moved down. You know.
Right, to their fields.
Down to their fields, yeah. So when that happened, they, the, the. Afton Field and the backfield became what I wanna call, um, in the very beginning, they were being maintained still. But now that the numbers have dwindled, just in general, and all, all different places for the most part. Um, they stopped taking care of them. So then the borough was supposed to take care of them and the borough didn't take care of them. Because I think it became a very heated issue because if CIT. Wants the borough to take care of those fields and still use them, then why can't citizens go down and use CIT's fields? And it just, and it just has been, uh, this for the last.
And that's why I think we wanna have a, a meeting with them and council to have a conversation about what goes on.
I think that they should just not have use of those fields. Um, personally.
And maybe we can.
And that's not to get CIT.
Well, this is something that's come up.
If they're not going to maintain them.
Yeah.
For their use, like they used to.
Yeah.
Then it should be either whether it become a dog park or it becomes a, a field again, but.
Or they have to pay for rental or something.
Exactly.
Or something.
It's something to that. You know, but, um. That just, you know, something I'm gonna talk to you after this about, but, um, you know. You know, I think that field, you know, could be used, uh. You know, for, for, whether it be softball, baseball, uh, you know, someone's having a family gathering, they wanna use it for wiffle ball. Whatever it may be, I've actually been talking to the rec board about, they were asking me different ideas. I'm like, you know. Create, you know, home run derby or soft, you know, softball, you know, tournament or, you know, different things like that to get, you know, people. But, but anyhow, I, I, I still think would be good as a field, not that I wouldn't wanna see a dog park in Crafton. Um, you know, but at the same time, no offense Eric, there's a ton of places that you can go. There, there are dog parks all over the place anymore. Um, you just go down to the south side, which takes us seven minutes to get to. There's three.
Not three in the afternoon.
Huh?
Not three in the afternoon with kids.
I can get to the south side in three, in, in that time.
Not, not when my kids get home from school, they cannot walk to the south side with the dog.
Walk to the south side?
This is, so, so, so the, the, the whole thrive pan, the rea, the reason why we put the, the value in our homes in this town. Around thrive is walkability. And there is no walkability connection to a dog park in this town.
And, and. I have three dogs. It's, it's, I'm not, it, it, it's okay and I'm not gonna, you know, I, I, I just don't, I don't think it's a, a.
My, my, my point to you is, and your, 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 your opinion is fine, but we spent six months on a park plan. And we heard the community overwhelmingly say that they want a dog park.
But I'm just saying that that field is not the answer.
We riddled it down to that is the only possible place that the community is willing to concede to locate it. Now that we've acquired this new place, I think that is even, even better because nobody cares about it because it's new.
And we know.
Political tie to it, so it's new.
And the borough, the boroughs.
Before anything else happens and somebody says, I need it for a mountain bike trail or whatever.
Forty acres in the valley. There's, I mean, there's tons of places to do it.
The borough was not interested in locating a dog park in the valley in that parkland. They were represented.
Well, things can change, is my point.
I, I don't disagree with you. I just, I don't care about.
Things can change.
I care about what gets done. And I think that, I think that a priority of this body. Should be about getting a, something as simple as a dog park. Like you said, everybody has one these days.
And it's easy to do.
And it's easy to do.
Takes no, really no infrastructure.
Right, right. We put sixty-five thousand dollars into the plan, which you said, well, that would be for a consultant to do it. If we did it now, so it'd be significantly less even than that. The point though is. We're going on a year now since that plan has been completed and there has been no action and no activity.
That's not true. That is not, that is not true. There have been several large grants applied for several conversations.
And a, a dog park is in that grant?
No, no, but that is, well, what I'm saying is there's been set, you, you said nothing has happened and I just wanna.
It's the dog park. I'm telling you, only the dog park.
No, there's also been conversations and you have to, you have to start. You're, you're talking about six thousand residents, all of whom care about different things. And, and yes, conversations have been started regarding talking to CIT and doing that too. So, yes, we have not applied for anything for a dog park yet.
I get you.
But that, but you said the parks plan has been, and there's nothing happened, and I just wanna be clear that there's been quite a few things that have moved.
Dog park.
Okay, well, I didn't.
The parks plan and the number one priority coming out of the park plan that everyone agreed was the number one thing that everybody wanted was a dog park. And it's the simplest thing, simplest thing to implement. And we have plenty of land to do it, whether it's in the valley, whether it's on the hillside. Even, I, and, and I, you know, I, I, I joke about this, but like, hear me out. You guys have been at Crafton Park. You can still maintain those ball fields. Dogs don't need flat land. Between the, between the, 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 what do you call it? The, the, the old volleyball, the, the gardens and, um. What do you call it? The, uh, the, the pavilion and the watering place there? There's a hillside and a flat piece.
Devil's Bend.
Devil's Bend. Devil's Bend. The Devil's Bend Dog Park, right? That could be dropped right into it. And, and if all of the, it's not, it, it's not something where dogs are walking. One of the biggest concerns of the, the location of the dog park. Was, um, dogs pooping on the way to the dog park and not putting it someplace where people park and go through the places where kids run. Right? So it was, that would still fit all of that kind of criteria. And it would be existing land that is. Not existingly used for anything in particular in terms of somebody owning it. My point is, let's get creative. As a body, let's make a recommendation to do a freaking dog park somewhere. Let's pick a place, let's walk a place, let's do a place. And so that, you know, so that council can hear a com, of, 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 you know, so hey. This is doable. We understand what it would cost. We understand what it would, you know, what it would look like. And we understand it would be a huge win for the community. That's what I'm trying to say, like.
So is that what you wanna do at the next meeting? Is talk about where dog parks should be?
It's what I've said for eight months, yes.
So.
Yeah, so let's do that.
Dog park and let's talk about, um, further talk about what to do with the actual. Baseball, the only baseball field that this town has.
Well, I think the next conversation should be with CIT and the council, so I don't know how long that'll take to have that conversation, but I think that's a conversation.
But do we as a government body? To have any conversation with CIT about that baseball field? Is there any contract?
No, there's no contract, but it's just, you know, it's, I've already talked to them about it. I've already made, I've already told them that. We wouldn't be tearing down, uh, Jason Westfield.
I'm not talking tearing it down. I'm talking about actually making it.
No, I know. Well, the initial conversation was to improve it as a field right now, but now there's been push from this body to make it a dog park. And so before we move forward with anything, cause now there's competing interests.
Let's figure out a different place to put a dog park.
Right, I wanna have a conversation with them and figure out.
Can we get, do you have any, um, topographical, um, information on the, um. Baker property?
Baker's Acres?
Yeah.
We have survey information. I can, I can get that.
So do they actually have the topography?
They probably, I mean, yeah, for what we paid for, they better.
Yeah, but, I mean, I think.
I can find out.
Because it's.
I'll reach out to.
Because it's all, you know, it's very overgrown and everything.
Right, right. And there is, and we know, uh, Dave was looking for the trail that goes down underneath the, uh. That goes, apparently there's an access road and stuff at the bottom too. Um, uh, that's what Dave was telling me today. Um, so we can.
Access road to go where?
Um, to the bot, that runs adjacent, at the bottom of the property that runs adjacent to the busway. That was an out older access road to get underneath the bridge.
Uh, well, there used to be, there used to be a junkyard over there too.
Oh, really?
On the, so on the, I guess it would probably be the city side. There was a junkyard all up in that hill.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's.
Might have something to do with that.
And that's now owned by Shortiers.
Nature conservancy.
Right, which is basically defunct.
Yes, I know. Thank God. It only cost me a couple million, but, um, so. Where I, you know, how, when I see you, you usually walk up by the school.
Yeah.
Towards my house. So, you know, so you cross over, no, cross the bridge, you make a lap right there.
Okay.
And at the end of that street, at the end of that little dead end street, there's a, basically, there's a trail.
It follows the power lines. Yeah, no, that one, that trail, that trail is the old pitway trolley.
That's the old trolley line, but Baker's Acres, so when you're walking down, Baker's Acres is off to your left. As you're going down to where it intersects with Wood Lawn and Shortiers.
Okay, right. It's basically the entire property from that right, from that, those power lines. Down to the bottom of the hill.
Gotcha. So, and then the reason why I was at, cause it's all overgrown, plus there is some water, um, there. And it'd be nice to see the topography to see if. How many feet, like, you know, we can go without actually having to do any excavation or anything like that. To where we can maybe get in there and get it cleared. I saw the borough has a nice big, uh, brush hog that goes on in front of a bobcat. That I think is, is that fairly new?
What's that?
A brush hog.
Oh, we read to that.
Uh, well, we can run it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but we're, we're, uh, we're looking at, uh, a similar purchase, but they're hard to use on the type of bobcat that we have right now, so.
Do we still got stupid one arm bobcat?
No, we bought a bobcat in two thousand fourteen or fifteen, fif- fifteen or sixteen, but we're looking at replacing.
Yeah, that's a stupid one. It's got, it, it's.
It's the four wheel version. We're gonna, we're looking at getting a track version.
Anyhow.
But anyway, yeah.
Yeah, it's four wheels and it only have, instead of having two arms for the bucket, it has one arm and it's just, I don't, it's some odd. Anyhow.
I'll be mindful on time. So, dog park, we're gonna discuss in earnest next meeting. Um, you're gonna get some topo information around Baker's Acres. We're gonna, we're gonna think about other potential locations. Around what we can make the, make the feasible, happenable, actionable and budgetable. Um, in terms of what we can recommend to council and plot it.
I was looking at ordinances. Now the ordinances are running anti.
Yeah, we have to, we have to.
If it's park, if it's existing parkland, then yes, the ordinance is something we'll have to, we'll have to, to, to factor into that in terms of regulation.
I think it's any, there's no park in the borough that's allowed to have, so it doesn't matter whether it's existing or not existing, they just not allowed.
But like Baker's Acres, that acquisition, if it doesn't, doesn't matter. It is not even a park yet, so yeah, would need to.
For this conversation, it's going to have to be an ordinance passed.
Right.
So that, that's a public process.
Yeah.
And that takes time, you know, you gotta have legal review and, uh, public comment and all that stuff, so.
I, I mean, and also if I look hard enough, I might have a topography map of. The hillside where he's talking about because we were going to put a football stadium over there twenty years ago.
Oh, you mean in the, where Jason Westfield is and all that? Yeah, that, that, we still have those plans. I think it was also talked about. In the parks plan at one point, having a multi-purpose field.
Waiting for those. Yes, I did.
Yep.
There might be duplicates of those.
Cause we were gonna.
Cause Gate, Gateway may have built the same, uh, done the same things as you.
Because where the, the bottom of the sled riding hill was.
Yeah.
We were gonna, we were working on putting an actual football field in there and there was enough room to do it and.
Just, just so you know, Gateway has those same plans on the borough website.
Well, they're probably mine.
Yeah.
Probably gave them to him.
Yeah, yeah.
I had my engineer, I had my engineer.
Tell you now.
When I was doing all my land development stuff.
All right, let's keep moving. So we have on this list EV charging. I, 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 I suggest we table that because that's a, you know, uh, I, I really think that EV charging. Uh, we address brick streets and eco districts and parking are all things that really, uh, the next thing. All are things that are post zoning.
Correct, yeah.
Right?
And then zoning support, commercial development, that's all the zoning.
Well, the last thing on commercial development, I, I, so, so here, here's what I do. You, you, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do this. You, you tell me if I'm wrong, okay? Hold on. So parking a lot of these items, the park, the, the, uh, the, the zoning is in focus, right? And then commercial development. I understand that that could easily be parking loaded. But I, I do think, um, that it's worth in advance of the zoning stuff hap, cause zoning stuff is happening. It is happening. It's not done, but it is happening. And so not everything has to be a waterfall where you do this and then this and this. We can do in, in coordination with that, we can have a conversation about how does the planning commission feel? And what do you think, most importantly, I care about you guys. What do you think about Crafton having a CDC?
I think Crafton having a CDC is a great thing. I do not, however, think it's the purview of a planning commission to take that on in any way.
Should we, should we be making a, a recommendation to council that they, that they?
I don't think we have, I don't think, I really don't think the planning commission has the purview to do that. Yeah, I don't think, you know, the, the, I mean, you can make that recommendation, but I really don't think it's within the.
You know, you know a shit ton more about any of this stuff than I do. What, what I'm saying is, like.
I, I'm, that's just my opinion.
It seems like it's a hole, right? This town doesn't have, doesn't have a CDC.
I'm not arguing with that. I'm arguing whether the planning.
No, 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 yeah, 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 yeah. Well, I'm, I'm start, I'm starting there with the, kind of the, the logistical part of it. We don't have one. Right? Then the next question is, is it our business? Right? Is it, is it our business?
I mean, it's your business as residents, but as planning commission member, I really don't think it's the purview of, I think you're taking on such a broad.
I'm, I'm, I'm just, just.
Well, because planning is about development and it's about land use. And a CDC is about commercial development. It's, it's not about just land use. And I really don't think, you, you already have a really broad scope of work here. I think the broader you make that, the harder it is to get anything down. And, and there are, there, and if you as residents and as a business owner want to get. Help creating a CDC, great.
Right. Right.
But I really don't think it's in the purview, I just think you're gonna be wait, you're, you know, if you want to get some of this stuff done, I would narrow your focus on. The things that are really within the planning commission's purview, just to be effective.
So, so in other towns that have not had one. How did it get initiated? Just, just well.
By.
Citizens.
Uh, well-intended citizens, business owners, people that are concerned about certain things, there's a million different ways that they get started. And it is good that if, if you do start one, that you make sure you, again, about buy-in, making sure that you include as many people as possible. Cause the biggest problem I've seen with CDCs across the Commonwealth is when more than one person wants to create a CDC and then you get competing CDCs. And then it's a real issue, cause then, then it's really hard to get funding for any of them because the state will be like, wow. You guys have to work together, and if you don't work together, we're not gonna give you any money. So I, I just think that, I think it's a great thing, I think a CDC would be a very, very useful thing. But um I just don't think it's the purview of the planning commission.
We're good? Cause we, we, we've talked about this for years and we've never, we've never heard that, right? And, and I, I, I don't, I don't want to say that it's a bad idea or that it shouldn't be done, but what I'm hearing and I'm agreeing. Is it's not our business. So if you wanted to go out and start, you wanna go start, you wanna go start a, 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 a community development corporation, that, that's great. But it re- and they could consult and work with the planning commission, but it's not really the planning commission or even the borough. Um that should be saying, hey, guys, community, we'd like a CDC, will somebody create one? That's really not the way that it's done. Fair enough?
Yeah, I'm good.
So we're done with it, okay, moving on, and the last thing is blight.
Well, I would actually step back one thing, I would not make brick streets as a parking lot issue since we're actually dealing with it. Um so I would. I would move it out of the parking lot issue and EV charging is really not a zoning issue either. Um I wouldn't necessarily have EV charging under uh zoning, you know. I'm not sure what the planning commission is deciding to do with EV charging. Um but it's not really a zoning issue, so I don't know how it's related to the uh, to the zoning part of it, but it might be. I, I think it, you could argue that it's a, a purview of the planning commission, but I wouldn't put it under zoning.
What do you guys want to do with EV charging?
I, I actually have it written down today about EV charging and solar options.
And solar is absolutely part of zoning because solar is.
Oh, it would be.
Yeah, oh, absolutely, yeah, 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 because you want to make sure that you don't, you want to have it in the zoning regulation so that it's. Because one of the biggest problems you have with solar is that a solar company will come and want to put it on there and then they won't know the regu- because it's not in our zoning ordinance.
Gotcha.
Though, they, then it's the worst thing for a developer to not have anything about it, because then they're at the purview of. Whatever magistrate wants to decide or zoning board or whatever, you want it to be written very specifically saying that you allow solar and.
Gotcha, that makes sense.
Whereas EV charging, it tends to be more of a building issue, um less zoning. So, and solar is.
So how about this, next meeting? We'll, we'll make it as a, as a formal topic on the next meeting is EV charging, what, what are we, what, what are we willing to, to, to? To, what can we do with your advice, like, you know, we can't, like, and we don't, we are, we recommend. We don't do anything, we recommend, so what could be recommendations? What are recommendations that maybe we can, you know, that'd be a probably good, good take home for each of us to think about? Is what has Spokane done with EV charging, how, what, you know, what sort of things? You know, because it's very difficult to have a extension cord on a twenty degree day coming across the road. When clouds are coming through, like, those are legitimate concerns, like, what does that look like? How does that? You know, how's that impact us in terms of what we need to plan for, et cetera, et cetera, so.
I'm gonna buy an electric car.
Yeah, yeah, well, that, 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 that would be, that would be, you know, that would be an ostrich component to the plan, yes, absolutely. Um and perfectly viable, right? Um I don't own an electric car, but you know, that's a good point.
If you don't live in a place that you can plug it in, don't get one. It's, it's that simple.
Right? But as they become more difficult to bond, um uh inter- commercial engines and et cetera, there's more companies moving away from it. Maybe that's, you know, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm not, I'm just playing devil's advocate to you, let's have it, let's have a, let's have a heated, yes, let's have a heated conversation. About the long-term planning, planning commission.
I'll be dead.
Of what that means, okay?
Go down to Dunkin' Donuts, they have a free one.
Go down to Dunkin' Donuts, they have a free one, um so then the last one was uh EV charging with blight. Blight. Blight.
I discussed this the other day.
Oh.
We weren't here.
I'm disgusted, yeah, I was, I was in Europe.
My answer was. Get them. Do whatever the borough can to get the property and then sell it. If they don't sell within X amount of time, then.
I fully agree.
Yeah, there's, we're working on, we're working on processes for that, yeah, we've met with the school board. And now developing strategies for how to take things to share of sale, in fact, eighty-two is on share of sale right now.
It's been on share of sale since last year.
Uh, no, it has not actually gone to share of sale yet, it is now going to share of sale in August. Um it had not actually gone to share of sale yet.
It's been listed, I'm, I go every month, it's listed, I go every month. They go, they do, they said that it's missing the green slip. I got George telling me what a green slip is, I understand what a green slip is now. Yes, it's been on the, it's been on shares since last October, every month, every month since last.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that, but, yeah.
Which property?
So my question is.
Mm-hmm.
My question is, because I take that personally, because I've had to deal with this shit for the past two years, three years, four years now. Um so I know that the Gaten's family are well-regarded in the community. And yet this property is owned by the Gaten's Family Estate.
What, the one on Belvedere?
No, no, no.
Oh, you're talking about the one that's on you.
Yeah, no, so, so, so here's what, here's what. I just want to understand this, I just want to understand, let's, let's say the grant comes through.
Mm-hmm.
And that property gets leveled.
Mm-hmm.
Who owns the land?
They do.
So the Gaten's family who lives two doors away and against family trust, who owns this? Why are we tearing down their property and paying our, look?
Well, it'll, it'll get lean and they are not, they will pay for that, if they keep the.
But it's a grant.
No.
We're applying for a grant.
Even if it's a grant, we are still spending the money and they will have to pay for that.
Interesting.
Oh, yeah, it'll be lean.
That's.
So whatever that, oh, so whatever value.
I'm infuriated, as, as a taxpayer, you understand, my, my perspective is, I'm infuriated by, here's a, here's a family that they got way more political. Hope this is recorded, way more political shit than I do in this town, right? Um and they're getting this torn down for them and they'll have a nice clean slate that they can build on or sell.
They will not be able to build on it, because they will not be able to get a building permit until they pay off the lien.
Beautiful, that's what I wanted to know, that's, that, that was.
But they, but they don't, there is still in the name, it's still.
My frustration.
It's still in the name of an heir, it is still not in the name of any of the currently living Gaten's, it is in the la- name of a deceased person.
I.
And, and it will remain there until they pay off the liens and tax delinquency.
Just like all the properties that's up.
Yep, right.
That, that, that's what I'm trying to get at, like, like, wait a minute, how is it that we're, we're doing a, doing a solid, because that's what it looks like? Because, because if it was free and clear for them afterwards, you know what I'm saying, like, we're, we're clearing your land for you, you know? This problem out of your way, now you can do what you want, but no, what you're saying is, there'll be a substantial lien there for sixty or seventy thousand dollars.
Hundred and twenty.
Hundred and twenty thousand dollars that, that will obviously go unpaid and that, that, you know, the good name of that family will be forever ruined. For tarnishing this town, right? Well, I'm just saying, right?
I mean, and they have no, the, the Gaten's that live here have no control over it, zero.
They have control over it.
No, they don't.
No, they, no, they don't.
They could have sold it for a dollar.
They don't.
They could have sold it for a dollar to you.
Even rich Gaten's cannot sell that property, it is not his to sell.
It's none of theirs to sell.
And they've never benefited from that trust?
No.
Oh. Good to know, good to know. Anyway, my point is, I'm glad to know that it's not going to be to somebody to locally benefit from. It will be for the community then to have to decide, maybe that's where the dog park will go.
Right, well, well, we don't, we won't own it, we won't own it, I mean, they, it still would have to be, it would still have to be sold.
Right, you understand what I'm saying, yeah, yeah, okay, that, that, that's what I was trying to get at, so in ter- in terms of what can the planning commission do with blight? There's a list of twenty some odd, um uh so there's a, there's a thrive, the confidence plan and blight is. Obviously, one, one of the big, big cogs of that plan. Um is there anything that this commission wants to do in terms of understanding those properties or promoting? To the community what blight means or anything that we want to do with blight?
I think that Jim and council are already working on it, so.
Right.
I think.
And Jim, Jim touched on the most important factor. Unless you have all three taxing bodies on the same page, meaning, because we are different than most places in the country. Right, you have to have them all three. And agree.
School district, school district, municipality and county.
And until the three of them.
Yep.
Agree. All right, to. Let go of any of the money that's owed on that property.
Right.
It will stay there forever, because they don't, unless all three. Agree, it will stay there forever, you cannot share of sale that property unless all three agree.
Right.
And the, the hard part is, is get either the school district, the county and the borough all to agree to say, okay, there could be a hundred thousand dollars. Hundred twenty thousand dollars owed on that property.
I want to hold on to this because I might get it someday, right, all it takes is one of the three.
It's.
To make that, that call.
And that's it.
Done, right.
And people don't understand that, and that is why you have blinded properties, because no one can agree to say, okay, let's let this go.
Is, is it, is it worth having um a publicly facing webpage? Right, could we recommend a publicly facing webpage of the twenty some odd blinded properties? Um and then list in three columns where the status is, so that if I don't like the fact that the county. At the school district and the, the municipality are for it, but the county's not approved it, and I live next to it, I now know that I can't. I, there's no point in complaining to Jeff Price, I need to go to somebody at the county.
I'd have to go back to what he's saying, we're working on this, and um I don't know that it, it would, it's helpful right now for the planning commission to get involved.
Yeah, though I know, I mean, I know, it's, it's, I just know.
I'm comfortable with that answer.
That was a, oh, absolutely, I just, I know it's something that Coletta um several years ago. And I, I, I know it's something that the borough is looking at hard and how we can make it happen.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, we have, there are several, there are several avenues, this is. One of the most difficult things in Pennsylvania because of our arcane property right laws that were. Created as a direct response to machine politics where they used to just take our properties willy-nilly. So now the property laws are very much in the favor of the property owner, so the property owner gets to do whatever they want even after being deceased. But it's a process, there's a number of different tools that we have, and it's a matter of getting, as you said, everybody on the same page, which is why we're working with the school board.
And it's very difficult.
It is, it is challenging, because nobody wants to invest money in this, because it's hard to see the results.
I think anything that this body does in terms of recommendations otherwise is completely moot, because it's something that's being controlled and they're gonna handle it, right?
So we're. We're working on it, I mean, it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a long process, but, you know, because it is a difficult, challenging situation, so we're doing what we can.
That's why the city actually has a little bit easier time, because they're in control of two of the three tax bodies.
Yeah, yeah, but they also have forty thousand blinded properties that they are.
Right, but I'm saying, it, it, it's a little bit easier process for them than it is for a, a Crafton Borough or a Mile Eleven.
But they've been very, Carlington has already been very helpful.
I'm sure.
So there, cause they, we have the same interest.
My thing is.
We want the communities to be great.
And that, and getting back and get, you know, if it's something that can be, you know, we talked about this last month.
Yep.
If you can get it and instead of tearing it down.
Right.
Put it on the market for X amount of time, see if a developer wants to come in.
Well, the issue, you have to be careful, and I, and, well, no, but I was, and I, and I did have a conversation with the director of the land bank here in town and. Um and you have to be careful taking things to share of sale with the idea that they'll be free and clear. Because, or, or selling it to developer that doesn't really know their stuff, because then what happens is, they buy it. They sit on it just like the previous owner sat on it.
Right.
And they decide not to do anything with it, and then we're.
But here's something, fifteen years. This is just food for thought for you, Jim.
Yeah, yeah.
Talking to him.
Yeah.
Let her see, and then, and, and sub point one.
What were you, what were you saying?
Read it, you good with it?
Yeah, I'm good with it.
We're not, we're not gonna mention blight, not our, not our.
No, it's not, it's, at this point, it's not.
Right.
Um, because they're already.
I mean, there might be, there might be a place for the planning commission once we get a strategy developed.
Exactly.
Right, right.
So, you know, it's just kind of like, um, like, say I buy a house in Crafton, right? And it won't pass an occupancy permit.
Right.
The occupancy permit then is, what I want to say, um, it is um retroactive to me getting A, B, C, E.
Right, right.
Okay, um now I will say there's no timeframe on that, whenever, you know, I mean, currently.
Well, as long as you pay the fines or whatever else.
Right, whatever would come about, well, is there a way? And again, this would be a question that you would have to ask, you know, the attorneys and whatnot, the solicitor, but is there a way to have? Uh, you know, not necessarily that particular tool, but something that says. You know, say this developer um buys this piece of property, okay? Obviously, there's an occupancy permit that has to be done at that point.
Mm-hmm.
And, but there is a, a limit to, I, I mean, something more stringent that's there now. That says, okay, you have to have, you know, the exterior of this building looking, you know. To meet borough code by a certain period of time.
Yeah, I don't.
You know, it's, yeah, I'm just saying.
Have to dig into that, yeah, I don't know.
Versus just, eh, eh, we've talked about it at, at, at last meeting, where is, you know, if the borough's gonna take that property.
Uh huh.
Right? Maybe.
Again, we're not, by knocking it down, we don't own it. But I just want to make sure that.
Okay, well, but in that, but let's just use that same, that, that concept of, say you took that property versus just tearing it down.
Let's say, yeah.
Okay, we, we, we acquired it because now the boroughs work, I mean, now the school districts work.
We would have to go through share of sale.
And, right, and we've streamlined this whole thing, right? And they, you know, and everybody agreed that the price would be zero or one dollar, or whatever it is. Then the borough could then turn around and sell that property, because now they own it.
Yeah.
And you could, you could have a, uh, but get, my point being is, is i- if, if you took that property or tear, tear that thing down. It's just gonna be an empty lot from now.
What you're, what you're, what you're talking about is very much what.
Do you follow what I'm getting at?
Yeah, what you're talking about is very much what a land bank already does, and we have enacted legislation in two thousand twelve that allows us to create a land bank. Or be a part of land bank, and we're in the process of also talking to Carlington about that.
Yeah, because I mean.
Because that's what that is.
It just seems, you know, okay, it's great, it's getting torn down, but it's just an empty lot, and nobody's, and no one's gonna buy it.
Who's gonna, who's gonna buy it?
There's no taxes being paid on it, there's no, you get nothing.
No, and that's where a land bank comes in, and that's hopefully what, if Carlington is interested, which I hope they are, um but that's a possibility, and again. All of this stuff is stuff, strategies we're working on, so I think we'll be at a place.
I'm just throwing ideas out.
Yeah, yeah, no, those are great ideas, yeah. And it is, it is, it is the hairiest, it is the hairiest issue, it is such a pain, I wish it was easier.
Well, that's what, you know, cracks.
Well, it's real estate.
Right.
That's the, that's the point.